Hello, everybody. Welcome to the September fifteenth meeting of the Norton Planning Board. I guess since Steve is not here, I will take over reading Governor Baker's March twelfth order suspending certain privileges of open meeting law, imposing limitations on the number of people who can gather in one place. So this means we call on the remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Took information in general guidelines promote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right requirement to attend, as found on Town Hall's website. And the agenda for this meeting has links to join the meeting via Zoom and/or call in via phone. This meeting also live on Norton Cable Access Channel fifteen and the next day on Norton Media Center's YouTube page. No in-person events, members of the public were permitted. Every effort is made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. If anybody has any questions, they can email them during the meeting to Paul, the Town Planner, at paulpgiuseppe@nortonmatus.com. So that's the truncated version of the meeting for remote participation. Looks like Steve is now dialing in to the meeting. So we have everybody from the board in attendance here. We should have a fairly short agenda today. So I will just move right along with it. We don't have anything under this, I plan more business policies. Correct, Paul? All of our other things got rolled into upcoming business?
Correct.
So we don't have any bills? The next item is the approvals for warrants and timesheets. Paul, did you want to just give a bit of background on what we're looking to do with the next, I guess, two agenda points?
Sure. So, as you know, we had recently, we had the change in the board makeup. So Tim is now the chair and Steve's the vice chair. We just wanted, you all mentioned that the last meeting wanted to bring back, at least for consideration, the recent action you took back in July regarding your signature on warrants and timesheets. The board voted for Steve to be the primary designate to sign warrants and payroll. And then Tim would be the alternate. We're just checking to see if that's still the direction that the board wants to go in. If the board wants to make any changes to that or keep it as is. So Steve would be the primary and Tim would be the alternate.
I think as a practice, it ought to be the chairman who is authorized to sign, whomever that may be at the time.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. Obviously, it's not a certainly doesn't qualify as a power grab, I don't think.
How was the language approved before? Was it that the chairman would be the one to do it? Or was specifically Steve's name mentioned? It was specific to Steve and Tim.
Yeah, we had to have specific names.
Oh, we do? Okay.
You sure with getting it to sign stuff or is that problematic?
No, no, I'm a I am working from home indefinitely, whatever that means. So at the home of my office has all of my stuff as well as one of my colleagues' thing who is crashing there. Since they've spaced everybody, they've taken everybody out of the offices and then spaced them out with an empty office in between. So, yeah, I'm around all the time. So I guess we would look to, unless there's any further discussion, we're going to entertain a motion for this.
Yeah, I'll move that Tim be authorized to sign payroll and bills on the board's behalf. I've forgotten, who's the vice chair?
Steve.
With Steve as the alternate?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, Joe motions. Orin, I think you had the second, oh, but before Julie, I'll just do it. I'm just stating it for the record so that people don't have to go who seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will just move on down the line based on how I have people organized in my gallery here. Orin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. There we go for approval of warrants and timesheets. In terms, the next agenda item is related, which is it does individual authorization or is A and R plans and definitive subdivisions. This one is a little bit different because this is something that needs to be filed with the registry, correct, Paul?
Correct.
So this, the the preference from your side would be to, if Steve is amenable, to keep that with Steve because it'd be paperwork and the the funds involved with making that filing current.
There's a filing fee of about a hundred and nine dollars. But again, that, you know, if the board did, you know, it's just something for the board to consider as part of this discussion.
I don't know. It's temporary anyways, right, for the remote meetings during COVID?
Correct.
Just a note, right now you have Steve designated as chair.
Yeah.
So I do think you probably need to change it.
That's true on the letter, on the
That's highlights.
Yeah, on the recorded, it does say Steve as chair.
Okay. In light of that, I guess it probably does make sense to file as much as I hate spending money for minimal benefit. I think that makes sense as long as what would be the now, because this is temporary, has there been any discussion, Paul, at the town level about the shifting back to in-person meetings or is it nothing coming down from the state level?
Well, you know, there actually are some towns that are back open. And I, my understanding is there are some that are actually starting to meet again with social distancing and face masks. But we had a meeting today that Town Manager has stated still that our practice hasn't changed yet. That will probably be an item, I would assume, at some point for the Select Board to take up. But for the foreseeable future, we will be continuing to meet remotely.
Wouldn't we have to be in a different location as well because of the post-selectment room?
Right, we're not able to meet in the the chambers. And I would, my assumption is to that, you know, because of social distancing, we would need a bigger space anyway. So we would probably would need to work with the media center because that is a fairly large space.
Media center or the library?
Or the library.
Okay. Could whoever just logged on from their iPad, please mute their device? Thank you. Okay. So given that the filing with the registry does specify Steve as the chair, I think it probably makes sense to refile. Paul, perhaps with do we, is yeah, just change the names? And keep all the other language the same. I was considering suggesting that we take off the serving as chair language, but I feel like that's splitting hairs at this point. Nobody has anything else to say, entertain a motion?
I move to designate you as chair in a capacity to pursuant to Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one P. Authorize you to endorse on behalf of the board. Approval not required, A and R plans under the statute and as well as under Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one X. Authorizing you as chair on behalf of the board to endorse subdivision plans under the statute.
Thank you, Orin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joe slash Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll go to the, down the line again, Orin?
Yes.
Joe? Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
And Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Takes care of it, those two points. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. There are two sets of minutes in the Dropbox. There's one from July fourteenth and one from August twenty-fifth. The Paul, the July fourteenth ones are back. Is there any specific reason?
They, those were continued. They were continued from two weeks ago because you hadn't had a chance to review them on time.
Okay, it just seems that you have a meeting back, so it's one of those.
Right.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review the sets of meetings? Does anybody have any notes they would like to make? We'll start with just the, we'll go earliest first and start with the July fourteenth meeting minutes. If nobody has any comments, I guess there's one thing for us to do.
I move to accept the minutes of July fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Steve. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Orin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, that's the meetings of the fourteenth. The next set of minutes was from our last meeting on August twenty-fifth. Does anybody have any notes on those minutes?
I have one question. On the future meeting dates, we did agree on the tenth and the seventeenth. My phone got populated with November twenty-fourth for some reason. And I don't know if everybody else's or everybody's got the right one. But it just, the downloads from the phone come in with my phone as November twenty-fourth. And that wasn't the case. Did anybody else have that problem?
Yeah, I did as well, Orin. The E-bike was the twenty-fourth of November.
Is it the right date? It said the seventeenth, wasn't it? This was in the minutes.
Yeah, I think we would move to avoid the twenty-fourth because of the Thanksgiving holiday.
I'll fix that, my apologies.
Okay.
Thank you, Nicole.
So we're staying with the seventeenth, right?
Good. I will not be during a meeting on the week of Thanksgiving, on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving because I have a feeling that the attendance would be poor.
Okay.
Okay. And we do have an agenda item later today to talk about upcoming meeting schedule again for a whole different reason, but so are there any additional comments on the minutes from our last meeting of August twenty-fifth? Okay. If there's no comments, then prepare to make a motion to cut the minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes as printed for August twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Joe.
I'll second.
Steve seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go to a vote. Orin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Moving right along here. The next item on the agenda is content information. I asked Paul to put this on the agenda because we've had a couple of instances where town email surfers have been having issues, specifically related to meetings. And obviously, Paul is not able to email people from his town email to your town emails if the town is down, email is down. So it just made sense to just have a non-town email contact method for everybody on the board in case if something like that happened and we needed to just reach out for a hey, we need to do X with the meeting tonight. I think Paul, you have emails outside of the town email for a number of board members, but there are some that you don't. And there's some people who may not prefer email as their chosen method.
Right. Right, I don't, I don't, for some people, I don't have any. And one question I have, do any of you or any of you still having a problem with your Norton email address? Are you all able to use it?
I was able to get online, but not through a computer. I was able to change it on the phone, which is weird.
Okay.
I can't, yeah, it won't let me log on. It says it's an invalid password when I log on. But I can deal with Nicole with that this week.
Okay, that's what I want to just make sure so we can initiate that.
Yeah, and I had, this is Scott speaking. I had an issue as well, but it was cleared today, so all good on my end, Paul.
Okay, yours is good. And I know others have had problems, but I think they've all been
Yeah, Nicole, thanks for helping with that too, I really appreciate it.
No problem.
That's cleared up as well. I had a problem with that too, yeah.
Okay. But I think if we just have some, if you're able to email me whatever contact information you want as your preferred alternate, that way we can, we'll have that as a backup. And I know I'd had some of yours in the past, and some of them, the private emails were I never saved them, but they don't show up now in the type in. So just be good to get that clarified and just to make sure we're your contact.
And Paul, it'd also be an opportunity to make sure that everybody on the board has your town cellphone number as well, if they need to contact you for some reason.
Yeah, I, I'll it's always in my signature, but I'll make sure I give you all. You know, with COVID, when we were shut down because of COVID, I was able to get a work cellphone, so really, that would be my preferred method of some of you have my, my, my personal number. It'd be better just to switch off to the work cell.
Okay. So whoever just wants to, even if you think Paul has the email that you would want him to use, just reconfirm that if you can. Whoever just joined and you could mute your device? Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is our meeting schedule as it relates to fall town meeting. So Paul, do you want to give some context behind that?
Sure. And we, so the last time we had met, I had notified you we didn't have any zoning bylaw articles for you all to see, but in between, in fact, when I got back from short vacation, I was notified that there are two items that will be needing your recommendation for the fall town meeting, which will be October seventeenth. It has to do with accepting roadway and it's, and it's the rail trail project where it crosses North Washington. And I want to say Hill Street. So we will need, we can use your meeting schedule. You're scheduled to meet
It's good, Paul. Can whoever is dialed in from number ending in zero four nine zero, please mute your phone? Thank you.
So you already have a meeting scheduled for September twenty-ninth. And but your next meeting, and my apologies, I'm waiting for my my Outlook to reload. The second meeting, if you needed it, is the same week as fall town meeting, that Tuesday. So I wanted to just bring this up to see if you wanted to move the, that second meeting up a week. So just in case you needed that meeting, you would have that second meeting. So you're currently scheduled on October thirteenth. And I was looking to see if you might want to move that to October sixth. Just so we would, that would give us roughly a two-week window before the before the fall town meeting plus Town Council has stated that that the Select Board needs to vote on this by October eighth to look at your recommendation and then formalize their recommendation for town meeting on October eighth.
So we don't really have a choice? We have to hear the sixth of October?
I would recommend it. We're going to do what we can to get all of the information and the right people to at that meeting on the twenty-ninth, but you know, I would just rather be you know, conservative on this and expect a second meeting and and have that, so that way we're still within the window that's been given to us.
Can I, can I ask why this was a surprise?
Well, I just didn't know. People the roadway has been accepted. But what happened was it was never done as part of a plan. And there's state law that says the planning board has to make recommendations on accepting roadways and as part of a plan. So, or ultimately, the town has to approve the plan itself. So that will be put in front of you.
I think the Select Board just covered this a week and a half ago, I think, on their agenda? Somewhere around then?
They did on Thursday.
Is the time period for additional warrants can close out at this point for a time limit?
Yes. Did you know this? Yes.
I just had, I guess, one quick question on topic. So if I'm going to be presenting, is this something that we need to be interpreted for us as a board at town meeting?
You would just be presenting your recommendation. This is not initiated by us. So we would just be reading the recommendation.
So who's going to be initiated by, is it like a part of a radio channel or?
It's under, it's through the town manager and it's through consulting firm and Mast dot. And there's also a, there's a rail trail partnership. So I've been doing some background and I'm going to, this week I'll submit, I'll put that in Dropbox for you. There's, I just, you know, as I know, many of you probably aren't familiar with the rail trail project, so we just, I just was able to get the latest designs for that, so that way you have it. And I found some PowerPoint presentation with some historical information on it. But ultimately, it's just to reflect accepting the roadway and showing it as a plan.
And is that to be moved into construction or for kind of the timeline for the project from this forward?
It's, I think we're looking at a 2022, but I've got to, I have to pull that together. There have been, of course, some delays with it. But I'll get the, I'm working on getting the timeline for it, for construction. It's still in design.
Is someone going to be presenting that to us or is it just the material that's going to do this?
I am asking for someone to present to you. Again, I'm not involved with the project and I, you know, I've stated that you all will probably have questions about this project next. So let's just get everybody who needs to be there, there, get this, get your questions answered.
So hopefully, we can go through all of this effectively on the twenty-ninth. But in the interest of being conservative with this, does anybody have any specific scheduling conflicts with October sixth? No, they reject that it makes sense to bump that meeting from the the thirteenth to the sixth and keep the meeting at the twenty-seventh the same?
Course good for me.
Yeah, I think we have to do that, Tim, in order to make the town meeting schedule not have, you know, a last-minute change. If everybody's available, I think that's kind of like, you said earlier, it's a moving thing, wasn't it?
Okay. So Nicole, would you be able to update the calendar invites to reflect that? That we're changing the meeting from October thirteenth to October sixth?
She says yes.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't really ever speak for her, but
That's fine. Okay. So the one applicant we did at the agenda, which is Special Department four ninety-four, four zero, Rear E Street. The applicants requested a continuance to our September twenty-ninth meeting. So that's moving on, moving on. And then we just had a few notes of upcoming business. Number two, I believe we've already covered, Paul.
Chair, could I just?
Please.
The zero rear Eddie, I believe you'd need to vote on the continuance.
My apologies. So to continue this to the twenty-ninth, Paul, I believe that you had a feeling that, and it's been continued a couple of times, that you had a feeling that it should be ready on the twenty-ninth, hopefully. And it wouldn't, hopefully.
It sounds like they were getting closer.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to continue to the twenty-ninth?
I move. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Joe.
Scott will second.
Thank you, Scott. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go to the vote. Orin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Julie, I'm back up higher on the list, but Julie?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. And the last set of bullet points in the end is upcoming business. We've already covered number two. So Paul, do you just want to run through one and three very quickly?
Sure. So all I want to say about number one, which is up regarding Cumberland Farms at sixty West Main Street. There, the applicant has provided us with a proposal. And Town Council has looked at it and has recommended that she present it to you on September twenty-ninth in an executive session to discuss that proposal.
And for an executive session via remote participation?
Yes.
I think Paul and I, you can't, we can't discuss this and basically we would put this as the final agenda item of the night. So we would move to executive session and the public portion of the meeting would be closed at that point. Um, so we would move to executive session and the public portion of the meeting would be closed at that point.
Right.
To kind of close off, um, any further participation from people, and we can lock the meeting at that point.
Right, and we've coordinated with the media center, so they're aware of it, and then as, uh, when it comes to recordings, we, or, or as the host, um, I or, or Charlene has the ability to, uh, you know, you would ask people to just leave the meeting, but if by chance somebody didn't, uh, we would have the ability to, uh, have them, you know, to, to end the meeting for them.
Okay. Uh, and the, the third point is not anything that we need to deal with in any of, in the near future, but it's kind of on the horizon. Um, the, there have been a number of retail applications for marijuana businesses in the town. Paul, what was the, is it five that you said?
Yeah, we've received, uh, five applications for a, it's through a request for information. And, uh, the, the overall goal for this is to identify for the town to ultimately determine the two that will go forward to receive a host community agreement. So, um, right now, the, we've received five, um, one of the members of a subcommittee that's also made up of the Economic Development Committee and the town manager, and we are right now in the process of reviewing these applications. Um, and the group, this committee will make a recommendation to, uh, to, uh, the select board sometime in October. Of course, it has to coincide with the town meeting vote on the marijuana bylaw, uh, that will either take place in, on, I believe, September twenty-sixth, or it might be, uh, October seventeenth as part of the fall town meeting. So, yeah, so we have five of them in place, uh, or here now, and, uh, ultimately, as you know, to, those two would end up coming to the board as part of a, a special permit. Uh, next year.
It'll go from the select, from that subcommittee to the select board and then to the planning board sometime probably in twenty-twenty-one.
Right, and would stops with the, uh, at the Cannabis Control Commission too, so, um, a number of things still have to go into, have to happen.
Okay. Uh, okay, so that is the, uh, the item on the agenda at this point. Is there anything else that anybody wanted to discuss at this point?
Uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, am I still going to be doing the, um, the town meeting?
Uh, I guess that is something that.
At the end of this month.
Um, I know that prior to, um, town meeting being waved off due to rain, um, that you, that you were because of the short round in terms of, um, when the rules change. Um, I have no issue presenting if you would like not to. Uh,
I, 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 I'll leave it up to you. I mean, if, if you would rather do it at times, I mean, like I said, I'll, I'll do whatever, whatever folks want.
Okay, uh, I will plan on the twenty-sixth that I will, that I will present for those articles which are moved. Um, so you are quote unquote off the hook. And I can work with Paul to review whatever, to review the materials, uh, as needed. Sound good?
Yeah, sorry, my, I think my audio's cutting out. I'm in my truck, so.
I understand. Okay?
Yeah, I know that. Come with me.
Okay. Uh, is there anything else anybody else wanted to raise for tonight's meeting?
I guess I'll, I'll let you all know when the town moderator determines if he wants to go forward with the special town meeting on September twenty-sixth or, uh, move it to October seventeenth.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you, Julie, and second is Scott? Steve, okay. Hearing nothing further. Orin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you, Eric, everybody, and have a great evening.